Okay, we'll call to order the Eastlake's Workshop. Wednesday, August 14th, 5:00 PM, rule call. Kirby, my name is Dan Remer.
Nicole Andrewoff.
David Paradise.
Michael Sommerfeld.
Jerry Bogie.
Jamie Nichols.
Nikki Holthaus.
Jessica Manville.
Michelle Maddow.
Business, capital improvement plan and presentation.
Well, you can have a look at that with solutions, also if he is Jamie Nichols. The two of us have been collaborating with our team to put together a long-term financial plan, which I'm going to walk through with you this evening. So just kind of starting out, and do feel free to stop me as we go. If you have questions I wanted to make to be super informative and then kind of walk through how the long-term line of structure, so you can get a feel for, you know, where can you see the different capital projects budgeted, what the cash flows look like, and then I'll bring you back to kind of the bigger picture as it relates to this debt position, its cash position, and then tax impacts, the break impacts from the CIP that we've been working with. So just kind of starting out, I'm going to reference the page numbers we've been talking through, so that way you guys can follow through in the printed document. But on page five is where we reference some of the major assumptions that are used in the plan. So for example, you show general fund revenues growing at a 2% ratio, with expenditures growing at a 3% ratio. We talk about what we're estimating tax capacity growth, and tend to use a more conservative sort of estimate for that, with the idea that if the city experiences, you know, growth from development, redevelopment, or expansion, that things will just look more favorable as you start to look out five and 10 years, but try to keep things a little bit modest in terms of how these projections are put together. So then moving on, what you find on pages six and seven are just some high-level sort of bullet points or major either projects or debt that gets modeled into the plan, just what some of the major activities that's happening in the various capital funds. And I won't read through all those now, because we're actually going to take you back to the financials and walk through some of those things as we go. But this is amazing, we kind of come back to, because it gives you a snapshot of some of the significant things that pop up in the 10-year plan. So with that said, I'm going to have you jump back in the report a little ways, and then we'll, again, we'll come back and look at the big picture stuff before we even end. And so I'm going to start with your first capital fund, which is Fund 401, and that's on pages 18 and 19. So the flow for all of the capital funds or the layout is the same. So what you start with is on the top, there's two pages of your 10-years CIP. So for example, in this general capital projects fund, these are all the projects that we have, projects or purchases that we have forecasted for the next 10 years. And then what follows on the next two pages, which we'll get to in a minute, is the cash flows. So it's here's the CIP, and then this is kind of the ins and outs for that particular fund. So starting out with this general capital projects fund, you can see there's kind of a variety of different needs that are spelled out in this fund, but the two that I'll call your attention to, which are the more significant ones, are the Trump Highway 12 left turn lanes, a rabbit hole lane extension of 1.6 million in 2024, and then we also have the community or recreational center project of 3 million in 2027. So now flip down to the next two pages, page is 2021, and that's where you see how this all cash flows out. So Fund 401, which is the city's general capital projects fund, had, and then about in the middle of that page right now, where it says cash balances December 31st, it has about 1.4 million cash, just kind of starting out in that fund. At the top of the page, you can see its major revenue sources, so this is unlike your enterprise funds, where you've got utility rates coming in, this capital project fund is primarily funded with property taxes. So we've got annual levy dollars that are coming into this fund to help with four projects. In addition, there's 1.6 million of three lines down now under revenues, we've got 1.6 million of your governmental revenue for that, which is a Trump Highway 12 project that I mentioned. And then in the other financing sources section, you see that we have $3 million of bond proceeds contemplated, and that is for the community center project. So this fund doesn't have quite enough funds to pay as you go our cash payment for that project, and so we're augmenting with bond proceeds. Now, we could buy that down, right? Because if you look at your cash balance in this fund overall, you could certainly buy that down, and take a look at where you're seeing the amount of debt that you have to issue for that project. So that's one thing that can be considered, just depending on how much additional change needs to be taken to this CIP for this fund. And then lastly, that very last section at the bottom, that debt service fund related activity, what that is, is when you sell those 3 million in bonds, there's going to be a property tax levy that's needed to pay those bonds, as well as it shows your principal and interest that's projected, and any interest earnings that it'll burn on, not pay all cash in that debt service fund while that bond's outstanding. I watched through that one in more detail, just so you could kind of get the flow, and as we kind of go through the next couple, I'll just keep it a little bit more high level, but I want everybody to get kind of comfortable with how it's sort of laid out. And so we repeat, for the most part, the same format with all the rest of your capital funds that are going to follow. Okay, so we'll switch gears then. So flipping over to pages 22 and 23, we get into the fire fund now. So you can see, again, at the top of the page, we've got the 10-years CIP laid out for the fire fund, with a couple of the significant projects being the fire station project of 3.5 million out in 2028, as well as a $1 million project for the purchase for the replacement of fire department engine number 11.
Because ours is printed two-sided, so other than yours saying like, go back and forth.
Yeah, and you can make notes to have that in sort of, and page two, so prints.
It's just going to be a separate tab.
No, I know, I just didn't think you would have that.
Anybody need an extra one, I should be able to.
Yeah, so similar flow, we've, again, in the middle of that page, we've got the cash flows related to this capital fund, so $100,000 starting in 2025 coming in as property tax levy, just to help cash flow the various purchases. There is the need to augment with bond proceeds for those larger purchase pools in 2028, for that fire station project. Again, there's not adequate cash in the fund to pay cash for it, so we're augmenting with bond proceeds. And so you can kind of see that for a couple of years, if you follow that cash balances line across, for a few years within the plan, it does dip below zero, so it runs into a cash deficit, but overall, it restabilizes by the, of the plan. So common techniques, if that actually plays out and is what occurs, common techniques are that this city could do like a temporary inter-fund loan for one year to cover that, knowing that that fund balance will be recovered through future property tax levies. Don't hesitate to stop me as we go, otherwise I'll flip over to the public works league fund on the next page, which is pages 24 and 25. Business flow, maybe sense for everyone? Okay. So this one, this is actually the new funds that we're suggesting you make. So it's quite common for cities to set up sometimes like an internal service fund, or just like a functional capital project fund, where you can do your chargeouts to all of the different funds or departments that benefit. So for example, for any one of these given public works trucks, you may be cost sharing out of the water store, and then public works in the general fund. So this is a really nice way to just have that kind of systematic chargeout, so that way the dollars are there each year, but especially given kind of recent economics around ordering vehicles, and there's something available to buy, you want to get a tax on it, right? So this has allowed communities to be a little bit more systematic, but maybe staff can come to you with one list of purchases at the beginning of the year, or even in the fall, saying that you need, you know we need to do these purchases next year, so that way your team has the ability to execute on stuff, because they all own office vehicles. So that's kind of the vision behind this fund, and it basically cash flows itself. It charges out the money as it needs it, and it really doesn't run a, it doesn't run a fund balance. But the great thing is, you're, you've accomplished pays your financing with this. You're paying cash for your vehicles, you know, we're not having to finance anything in this realm, so that looks very nice. Same story on the next two pages, so pages 26 and 27. This would be your public works engineering funding fund, same concept. It's going to be chargeouts to the different funds, it's going to accumulate those dollars here, and make sure that you have what you need, so that way you can perhaps be a little bit more systematic with your approvals, and be able to execute those purchases in that one as a, people's benefit. Okay, your street improvement fund is next, page is 2021. So again, at the top, you can see all of the street projects that are contemplated for the next 10 years. In the middle section, you see that, again, this is, this is a governmental fund, not an enterprise fund, so property taxes are going to be the primary source of funding for these items, so you've got that $100,000 levy worked in. There is the need to augment with bond proceeds, so you can see in about the middle of the page, there's $1 million projected for the streetscape project, 3.5 million for the country and U.S. state's first street north improvements, way out in 2028. But overall, this cash, or this fund maintains a meager yet positive fund balance, so you're able to cash flow the rest of the, you know, street reconstruction needs, or whatever your needs, I haven't spoken about them several years. And then at the bottom, again, just to keep in mind here is, all that is, is when you issue those bonds, the debt service fund gets created, and so what that's doing is it's taking in the property taxes that you need to pay that bond, and then it's accounting for the principal interest payment. Now, where do we get to your enterprise? So just a couple of funds, a few funds left, or four of them left. So the layout and the wording is a little bit different, but it's, it's pretty much the same, and then you've got your capital stuff first, and then your cash flows follow. So obviously, as we talk about water and sewer, and likely where some of your discussion will be tonight is around those bigger facilities projects that you have coming up. So on the longer end of things, there's the consideration of building that new water treatment, and that's out in 2025. So we have that model in corresponding bond proceeds, and then what the city is looking at, securing PFA financing for that. We have a model right now that's 20-year amortization, and that certainly maybe there's possibly a 30-year amortization with the PFA on that, but assuming a slightly lower interest rate, because the PFA made and helping with that financing. So again, probably the biggest item of consideration, and this is mentioned in the memo at the front, is you'll have about 2.4 million debt service payment that will come online even in 2026, related to that water treatment facility. So you can see, when you look at those receipts from customers and users, if you start right at the top, with about half a million right now in receipts on the water end of things, you can see how that has to jump up in 2026 to help make those debt service payments. So it jumps up to about 2.5 million in 2026. We talked with Jessica and Michael a couple of times now about, as you get closer and you start to find 20-year plans for these projects, I think a more detailed rate setting is probably appropriate. But for now, this just gives you an idea of what the debt service will be, and how it is in total where it cash flows. So your standard areas work fund comes next, that's Fund 602. There's one project contemplated in this fund, this fund has a very healthy cash balance. My point, Jessica, feel free, if you want to offer any sort of creative helpful, or student, or context, about some of the different ones, their structure being the conveyor system, personal treatment, but if there's any ones that are helpful, then feel free to add those into it. Otherwise, this one has some existing debt service that I'll continue to pay off, but really, that cash balance is growing to help you. So if there are other projects that end up fitting into the plan for this particular fund, it has some kind of bandwidth to look to for them. Your storm work fund is next. And that's on pages 34 and 35. At this point in time, we didn't have any projects identified that needed to be modeled. The fund is producing adequate cash from operations, it can pay its expenses, it's paying its debt service, and it's producing a small, you know, $45,000, or at least a front investment on the fund balance, so it'll just continue to roll at a very small rate over, over the next several years. And then the wastewater treatment fund is next, pages 36 and 37. And this is where we have the plans to construct a new wastewater treatment facility, or regionalize with the Buffalo, depending on which direction and how it takes. There's $30 million modeled in 2025 for that, same scenario, PFA financing, we're showing about 20 years right now, perhaps there's opportunity for a different structure with them. But again, you can kind of see, right, this one has slightly higher receipts coming in at about, you know, $780,000 a year, but that jumps up to about 2.4, 2.5 million later on, to start building up enough revenues to pay back that new bond then. And again, same thing, there's a few years with, but you can see it runs the cash deficit, because those receipts aren't coming in fast enough as that debt is built in. You can run an inter-fund loan temporarily, if, as long as there's some, you know, plans to resolve that, or future rate adjustments for revenues. That's fairly far out, so there's an opportunity to adjust that through this as well. Finally, the last few pages of the report just kind of show you some graphical illustrations of a lot of the information that we talked about, but it shows you, you know, health of the general fund balance over the life of the plan, where the city kind of fares in terms of comparable communities, as far as the debt per capita, and different things like that. Otherwise, I want to hop back to the three, excuse me, the three just sort of high-level reports that we produce. So again, in the memo, we did, we offered you just kind of a glimpse at what sort of rate increases might look like for those utility funds, and Jamie, I think you calculated that like 200% on the water.
Yeah, 200%, I think for water, I forget what wastewater was, but it was very similar.
An increase of 200%?
Yes, to get the cash flow really positive.
With, with just, or I should say just, but with maintenance increases of, you know, 5% to 7% in the years thereafter. Otherwise, we need put in here three summary reports that just give you a big picture perspective of cash taxes and debt. So the very first one is the tax summary, so I'm on pages nine and 10. A lot of information and a lot of shuffling. So on pages nine and 10, this just brings in all those levies that we talked about. On the top section, you've got all of your, like, primary operating funds, so obviously the general fund being the biggest, Park and Rec, PVA, so on. That next section that I highlighted in yellow, those are your capital funds, so it's bringing in your existing levies from your capital funds, or new levies from your capital funds. And then the next section below that, that's all your bonds, so those are the property taxes that are needed to pay all of this in bonds. You can see, like, for example, with Fund 313, 314, Clemente Avenue in 2012, the bonds, you can kind of see those fall off. So those fall off in 2026, those bonds get paid off. A lot of communities try to tap into that leverage, right? So that's a nice leveraging point, where if you can structure a new debt right after a follow, it helps create some bandwidth for you with a levy. And that's kind of what's happening here, is maybe a one-year gap, but then starting in 2028, you see those new levies coming off, it was projected, street, fire, and community center projects. But the big purpose of all this is to just share with you some information on the next two pages, which is 11 and 12. So the low tax rates, you see on my NASA total city levy tax rate, and it starts off at 50, instead of two. So the idea here, we'll take any feedback tonight on revisions, or changes, or other things that need to be considered in your final document, but the goal that we'd like to see is, when we issue your final two, we want to try and get that as well as we can. Now, it may have to have some increase, just because your capital needs are increasing, so, but overall, what we like to do is just avoid a roller coaster with that tax rate. So what we'll want to do is, once we have any final changes, or do the final iteration for example, just even that out over the, over the next several years. And so that just means that we'll toggle some of those levies a little bit, just to kind of get that flush. So that was your big picture tax look, the next two pages have kind of that big picture cash position look for the city. So this cash report, on pages 13 and 14, this is all of your city funds, and they're projected and made cash balance for the next 10 years. So you can kind of see, Jamie's got radial logs on here that kind of show you which are the ones that you need to kind of keep an eye on, because they're marked in red, or items in green are, you know, looking good for all years projected. But overall, at about a $13 million cash position now, there'll be some ebbs and flows over the next several years, but at the end of the plan, it's at about 2 million. And then the last thing, I'll be quiet, because I've got a lot of information up there, the last, I convinced your debt schedule on pages 15 and 16. So we talked about a few different new bond issues tonight, with the community center, and they're right now at 3 million, fire capital, 3.5, two street projects, right, one in 24, and then one in 28, and then 30 million each on the water, and then on the wastewater side of things. So that pumps up your debt position in 2025 to about 70 million, but then by the end of the plan, it's been paid down to about 47. So if that makes any difference, any questions or thoughts on the table? Is the pace okay, does it go too fast?
The glaring issue that I saw of all this stuff would be the debt for Canada, and I believe Sam said the same thing today, but just the overall debt for Canada, just massive, a huge, like...
Focus that maybe on phasing or prioritizing some of these projects could take a backseat, some of the, you know, some of them are in conjunction with one another, like Community Center, you know, Community Center or Community Center City Hall would be more of a follow-on with the expansion of the fire department, but that is more of a, if we talked to Kevin, it's probably bad backward a few times, so that one's probably becoming more of a priority as their haul levels increase. So that might be something to talk to Kevin about in the near future, just to get really pinned down, on if that's something that could push back if, you know, though it might affect the taxes, the water or wastewater are moving a lot sooner. But then, maybe there's some things that, maybe there's some savings in not doing some of these projects, or putting them so far on the back burner that they don't affect the real cost drivers, again, not taxes, but the wastewater and water. And then maybe as far as wastewater, phasing one before the other, versus, we're talking about, again, these are assumed with $30 million, and we've gotten, you know, we have very rough numbers going into both of those projects. But we're in a better position with wastewater, and that one is a necessity, it has to happen. Some of that is going to be cost shared with WRLA, so these numbers could come down, depending on how involved they're going to be, how much they're, how much we're talking about. But that one, even if we were paying for the entirety of the project, we're looking at, if I understand correctly, more so doubling our rates. And when it comes to water, that one, if the, if these numbers hold, as far as what we really have for debt service, we're looking at tripling our numbers for water. So doing those both at the same time in 2025, in addition to some other projects that the taxpayers may see, you know, again, around a lot of some of those tax revenues, but anywhere from 8% to 10% increase in their city taxes, that's going to be a tough bill as well. And just one thing to comment about the water rates, you know, we have the ability to raise them, and, but just this year, just with what I would assume would be inflationary pressures, our lists of unpaid water bills, or late water bills have doubled since the same time last year. So I think, you know, if there's a, this is, you know, there's a lot of bills you have that if you don't pay them, you're shut off, but water, it's a little longer process, so I think people can make that decision if they're not paying a bill, that water, or you know, water and sewer, that's something that they can put off a little bit without immediate impact. So I would imagine, you know, their other bills are probably going to be suffering too soon, if, if it's, you know, all just based on one number, if I can believe that much information, but I don't think there's something to be said for the number of people being late, and it must be doubled over last year. So I'm worried that doubling and tripling two of those rates on this may, I mean, push residents out, or just put them in a way where, you know, if they're following, if we're special assessing those kind of numbers by the end of that year, or by, you know, two years over, that will push people out of their homes, because now their taxes are ratcheting up some of them. Some of them are just starting out, and it's, there's going to be things after you build, we have to expand, but I'm worried about staring at those numbers.
So where do we go from here? We have the numbers where, what?
Well, it's up to you, right? You guys.
It was just a general, you know.
With all your concerns, Michael, what do, what do you suggest? With all your concerns, Michael, what do you suggest?
I, my, I mean, the one thing that has to happen is the wastewater plant. We don't have real concrete numbers on that yet, especially since we're still waiting for Buffalo to answer some questions. And even after that, that's, you know, waiting for more discussion with Waverly and really finding out what they want out of this or what we want out of it, and if that's going to work with them. So I think wastewater is going to happen, and we may as well assume $30 million if that's the worst potentially, and then, you know, breathe a sigh of relief if it comes down from there, depending on the decision made. You know, again, this, it's how much can the customer stomach, I guess, as far as water is concerned, even if we push water off for a while, there's still going to happen sticker shock once it hits. It's still coming, and it's still going to, it's still going to hurt when it does happen. So I guess, I don't know how far you can push that off to make it less of an impact.
But in order for us to expand, we need to do something with the water, no matter what.
Right.
So...
But as far as the tax rates go, if we're just focusing on trying to keep taxes low while the water and sewer rates are ratcheting up, then, you know, it would be those discussions of what things that are being pushed against the taxes of these other, mainly three projects, the fires, like Community Center slash Community Center and City Hall, if those can be put off, you know, have a discussion with Kevin on how, what kind of priority is he thinking, what kind, you know, what does he want to see and when? To see if those are things that we can push outside of the initial sticker shock or until we're seeing some, some relief from those initial model issues. And then even with the 2023 street improvement projects, some of those included are potentially partially funded by the, they're going to be in, at the same time that the state is doing their work with Highway 12. So it's really, that's maybe another idea of priority, what do we want seen with Highway 12 streets getting, or any of them, it's a prioritized list. The big thing is wastewater, and the ball is water.
And two, if you, if you start making some incremental adjustments in your water and sanding, your wastewater drainage rates over the next couple of years and start building into that, it's going to feel like less of a sting in 2027, 2028, whenever those projects come to culmination. And then, and my suggestion is just hold tight on that sanitary 602 rate since that funds out of cash and, just knowing that there's not a lot of projects lined up for the paving system itself, it's not in the, it's not in the work ethic we have right now. Maybe just hold tight on that one a little bit. I never really liked to correct them that because we do a lot of rate studies, and what we find is if we maybe start doing that 3% and 4% adjustment each year, it avoids having to do this big hike, but I think you're in a position to have fun where it's comfortable saying that, to just give somewhere to adjust the other two and start scaling up those projects.
And I'm wondering if, in setting over the data that we have or some of the proposals of these projects, I wonder if some of that 602 should have been, some of the wastewater treatment plant expansion, even if we're sending to Buffalo, some of that is going to be sewer. So it's piping, but I don't, I don't know how much of it is getting Waverly's to us, how much of it is just getting to Buffalo, where the cost sharing isn't that. But I, I guess now upon reflection, I think some of that $30 million is going to be probably going to 602, it's not going to be something we talked to Dan and talked to Jared about, just, you know, in some of these proposed projects, how much of that could conceivably be sewer versus wastewater?
Six to 12 months, six to 12-month operating reserve typically was ideal minimum in those underpriced funds, right? So you've got an operating budget of, let's say, half a million dollars. So you've got room there, right? Maybe a million and a half, a million and a half, or whatever. I suppose that's what the community's asking.
I suppose if we pitch the Buffalo idea, you know, the main, if they're doing the processing, what are you going to be focused on, the utilization, right? So that would probably, that would be more of a sewer function. So actually, some of that operating cost would probably slide over to, it would be more of a sanitary sewer focus.
How old is this?
Eight-four, I think. I have a question to how other cities are doing it, or how the agreements run.
So right here, Longchamp Financial Bank is a pretty fluid document, right? There are communities that update this on an annual basis. That's where estimates change, projects change, things change, priorities change. However, we look to leave you with a document for this year, for this iteration, that most closely resembles how you're feeling today of things. So we drafted down a few notes, and if there's any other sort of changes regarding capital stuff, people already gave that final iteration. If you're going to share those with us, otherwise my own just certainly concern me for those things after this.
And the thing that stands out most, obviously, is the larger, the things that we're actually going to need debt on. But I think there are some, some things in here that are going to be short-term increases, like building up a, you know, a fleet replacement for both equipment and vehicles. But I think in the long run, we're going to save more money on, you know, that's, that's a lot overdue. Some of those smaller impacts in here, I think, I mean, they're both necessary, and they're going to make planning far easier, and we're going to have cost savings along with them. So we actually have to be able to worth something that we're rotating. We're going to have savings there as well. So it's not, it's not all dire.
And I mean, it is a, it's not, it probably won't be as bad as one of those, the $30 million price tag, wastewater may very well be split in some portion or another.
Yeah, even if, if we, in the discussions coming in the next days and weeks, even yield some better ideas of what Waverly wants to do, and how can they crush the numbers with what they're impacting versus ours that are expanding right now? We're, you know, they're creating a lot sewer access charges that they're billing, billing off. So they might be on parity with us, you know, soon enough with how much wastewater is there versus not. So it could be close to the middle ground as far as who's using what and how it's all going. So if we get some of that feedback before we make this final, you know, there, there might be a rosier picture by the middle of this plan.
Right. I guess if we were to push, we can, that farther back, not that we'll wait longer for it, but I think water would be the one that we can push a little farther back in this 10-year plan. I mean, we want to get that water project on, but, wrong, he's throwing $60 million.
Those are big numbers.
And especially the water, there's, at least with wastewater, we're, we're with somebody in on that one. But the water, there's no guarantee that we're going to have a partner on.
Yes, but in discussion in terms of what pieces, you know, because you talked about the water project, you kind of dovetail it, and is there going to be talk about how those projects will play into like your water, your wet charges or any trouble, so that we, maybe we're not far enough?
Yeah, we're far enough. No, we could mention it in the last meeting, and it was part of it, was, the way you really brought up that we have to like charge not only like Buffalo's sewer access charge, but also our sewer access charge. So it'd be like, probably not on those things, so we can pay Buffalo and also making out.
You're talking wastewater, right?
Yeah, that was it.
Yeah, I was going about that, but it'd be similar for, for ours.
Ideally, when would you like to see this finalized?
I would, I would hope we could finalize by the end of the year. So we have a picture looking at 10, 14, and 15. We have 14, we are on our budget, maybe it's about, yeah.
Maybe wait back, you said we, we planned for like November 1st, sort of caught off on any final CIP changes. We just have, some, we just have to pick a point in time, knowing that if it's forward, you know, likely revise the plan next year. Maybe we hit like a November 1st, sort of circle back, tie up on the CIP, and then issue you guys a fresh report with.
And then as a, or, that would be in time for the November meeting, so that would be looking at maybe a December review?
Well, we could just back it up, if that's the goal, and it would be for you to do in November. I mean, you're just playing a four-year lead. So if that's ideal to be revisited again in November, then we'll just leave the timeline rubber on that.
I could take a look at just 2024, as far as if it has budget impacts before the preliminary. If there's anything on there that's a big question mark of whether or not we would get that. I think more of, I would just say, the point about the, the bigger question mark.
So why don't we want to reuse the, we're going to have the final in perhaps December? And just want to do the truth in taxation?
If we, if we want to set, have no more changes till November, then that would give, I think, Jamie, enough time to make any changes and then have it ready for the, for the summer for the approval. And that would give us time if we're putting it up to November to have under one chat, or I can gather questions from council members to look into or, or consider. It would give some window for, if there are big questions out there, changing things, what they are ultimately.
Revenant, ready?
I appreciate you guys coming from a lasting time tonight just to come out and watch everything with you. Yeah, we'll look forward to giving feedback on the priority and timing of things and issue you a final iteration.
Thank you. Do you want to keep going right now, or do you want to take a five-minute recess and come back to the topic of wastewater here? Jessica, you or Jared for this one?
Well, so myself and Michael and David and Dan and Jared have been giving names with Waverly so far regarding wastewater, reutilization or upgrade. I have not sure what structure that's been going yet. So I just kind of wanted to, if you guys update events, see if you guys had any direction you were referring to go with this, and I sign off maybe after a couple of questions about what if? So one of the things is the initial buy-in for reutilization to Buffalo. I told you guys, I said this announced to you guys, so it's $15 million, 378, 603. Just the buy-in, but not include the pipe, the water station.
Upgrades to their wastewater plant?
Yeah, another biosol container, that's another big, big cost item. So, correct me if I'm wrong, reutilization and Waverly Plant are kind of similar cost fields at this point, correct?
What does the buy-in give you?
So basically, the buy-in is, when I, they used like our, our usage to estimate, like, basically, they have a sewer access charge for us, and that was the number they came up with. And that's just to hook into their system, basically, like to pay for all work connections to the whole base of their system. I think we are going to ask if we can do like remission fee or something instead, or if that was a possibility.
Yeah, so basically, the buy-in, so right now, they have a facility projected for whatever you're looking at, year 2030, is what they, the facility is constructed for for their users. So now, with the addition, should reutilization for, with the addition of Montrose and Waverly, there's a piece of that plant that would now, the capacity would be taken by Montrose and Waverly, whereas they would not have that for their users. So that $30 million is what they assign to the piece.
That capacity.
That capacity piece.
Um, we're kind of trying, right now, we're following up some questions with them just to try to get some more information about, you know, because they, they also have this rates on the component of their system, and I'm talking about this. And then we have to, obviously, need to know our, our, I just started making that meeting way out there after installing all of that. My question is, what if we want to do a reutilization of Waverly's? Because what I'm getting from them is sort of, what should I be able to be a customer?
Wow.
I know nothing's been said, you know, I'm not sure about that, but that's just kind of feeling.
Then they could also, no, I just want to, they're, in the fact that they're their wastewater. In my opinion, just because that is the capacity piece of the buy-in, I anticipate the buy-in would be less.
I mean, is that something that would be possible for us to still reutilize with Buffalo and them to do their own thing? Just, just a what?
Absolutely. They just have to shut off their connections to us and essentially turn on them to their own.
They would have to build a facility.
Yeah, yeah, or someone, um...
No, the contract they have with Waverly, when they, it renews itself, so.
Because it sounds like...
There's a legality there, you know?
Because it sounds like they want to build a plant and...
They want to build a plant.
And choose, they do, they do have a...
And they want to be part of it.
Correct.
Right, they, they would like some sort of, yeah, basically, a commission to do it and dual running versus being controlled by the other person.
But, but talk to the engineers, usually the way it goes is one town runs the facility. One town budgets and runs it. That's why I don't think everybody's ever going to get their way in that. I mean, they could have a commission, but one town has to run the budget and the facility. That's just the way it goes, whether they like it or not. So...
I think that they just want, I think they want to stay in what goes on.
You know, whether Montrose deals with it then, just tell them, if you want to stay, build your own plant.
And these meetings have gotten nowhere.
Pretty much.
Nowhere, yeah.
With wastewater.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can see any, I don't, I don't think idols can take on that full amount that we look at at $30 million, so whatever we're going to do.
Well, another question I have to counsel is, are we, are you guys still wanting to do reutilization? Or are you thinking you want to go to plan, if they're both cost? Or are you thinking you want to go to plant if they're both cost similar? As far as ongoing costs, operation and maintenance of a plant is going to be spending a lot higher more people. Will that have positively staffed 24/7? We're not sure on that yet.
And there, maybe not, I mean, it depends.
It depends on what kind of plant they design, yes.
You will be hauling more slugs, eh? You can't hold on to it for 10 years like you do now, I mean, it'll be.
Yeah, you mentioned that likely we're hauling above.
Nothing's set up yet, but. You'll be hauling it up more often than actually a slug plant, that's no doubt. That has, there's no setup thing with that, like you said, right now either, but. I mean, their rates, even when you connect with Buffalo too, I'll remind you, their rates will go up because their operation costs will go up. I mean, it's going to cost you money to do whatever in the long, long run. Do you want to be dealing with this another 20 years and building another plant? Or you just want to connect with Buffalo to be hopefully a customer for life, most likely? It's. Jared, how many towns have ever not, once they are part of a regionalization, how many towns have ever disconnected and went off on their own? Probably not, once they regionalize, it's usually for the long term.
Not that I'm worried about that in my head. Almost something dramatic happened, but not weird, that scenario.
It seems that these Waverly meetings and I'm now at Buffalo, they're going to want the official.
Presidents.
Opinions and.
Billings.
David is going to come in, but it will be like get more person there and things available than that because it's, you know, that's what they want. They don't, you know, they don't want staff, I mean necessarily unless it's, you know, somebody called the works or wastewater.
Yeah, it's the 21st, right?
It's 21st, that's the, and it's a, all they have is a.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because I already cleared my schedule for today, so.
Well, I think Waverly wants that more. Obviously to talk about how that one goes, they might have something with the meetings after that as well.
Is it that they just don't want to be a customer? Is that really it?
That's, that's the biggest thing.
The one thing that's, again, they haven't made specific comments like, we're not willing to do this. But the one question I had from them last time, because a lot of the questions that they want Jessica to ask Buffalo, it's about this buy-in price, which I understand there is buy-in. They, they want to know more details about how they came to the number or what, what we're getting, make sure we're not getting charged for their sewer lines around Buffalo. But I asked, is it coming? The mayor of Waverly, just what, if there's a number they're looking for? Because, I mean, we're going to have this meeting and the biggest question we're asking is just where are you going with these numbers? But, and then potentially can these numbers come down if anything? But what kind of cost saves are we looking for to change the decision? So I want to ask if the decision is right now a no unless the numbers come down or is it a no anywhere or is it, you know? And it's kind of just like, well, we'd like more information, but we're going to get that information and we're going to have the same question, which is, is, is that feasible? Is it too expensive? But I think, I think the primary motivator that we're getting from Waverly and their, that's their, right? Is they want to have, they want to have say, they don't want to be just a customer.
Right, but if they want to continue to build, they have to do something or they just stop building.
Let's see, let's see with Montrose.
Right. But they're building like, I mean, at least for us, we have it kind of a plan. They don't have a plan. They just need to build it. So they're going to have to make a decision. And then I don't think they have the money to do their own thing.
Has anyone from Waverly been attending those Buffalo meetings?
They're saying.
It's all, I think they're all getting it.
They're saying all we.
They're doing it on Buffalo.
Trying to make sure of all, right?
We just had meetings.
Well, Waverly.
About 15 days with varying times, small dates thrown out and five days just so we're doing that.
This is what most people are about to go.
Yeah, they did that survey, yeah.
So I just wanted to see where you guys are at with this, so we're the ultimate meeting, you know, we're not just like, oh, I don't know what they call those things.
I don't, I don't really want what we want for growth in Montrose to be controlled by somebody else. And I get that that is the same thing, and Waverly's saying right now, do, we're right now, we're in control of our own fate. If we want to do an industrial park, if we want, and I'm not saying if we want this 900 home development at some point in the future, do we want to have to go to someone else to give approval for that?
Those are questions that we should be reading about.
Let your plant capacity, give you your own approval for that if you have your own plant.
How about, is that common here, guys?
I guess that's, sorry.
It's, I mean, just to remind you, when you build a plant, what's the average lifespan of 20 years, right? I mean, that's what they usually.
That's what we're designed for and why we picked, we had a discussion about growth protection should we use.
Be doing it again 20 years and another 20 years. I don't think, I don't think Montrose ever handcuffed Waverly on what they were building at all until this point, you know? I mean, I don't think Buffalo would ever handcuff you guys on standing. That's a good question to ask them, they have to.
I mean, it's the same thing, every 20 years, they would either read it, expand and do the same discussion, but it would basically end up in there saying, well, you're an A now, it's bad.
Well, they would also like to be, some of us have.
Right, but it's going to be the same whether it's the plants in your backyard or if it's over there. It's all going to be about the facility itself. I don't know if there's going to be more guidelines when we build a plant, there's going to be more on PCA guidelines on, you know, because you have to redo a permit and all this. Like when we built this plant, one of the big things they had was phosphorus removal. And that is, I would say 60% of our costs.
Proud of that plant right now, primarily.
It's fair, fair cost to get phosphorus out. Who's to say there's not going to be more guidelines that we're going to have to do if we build a new plant?
Pay more.
And pay more.
Yeah, I can assure you that.
There will be. See, when you build a new plant, they like to make sure that you get rid of more stuff.
Right, I am, I am planning that too, but I think those costs, I mean, those will get passed on to regardless of whether it's a direct or indirect cost.
Right. Regardless if it's there, I don't know how it would affect their permit either, but.
I mean, as, as a city asks Buffalo for more and more capacity, there will always be more costs. I mean, this 15 million plus whatever the rate is, that's for now. Moving forward in the future, there's always, I mean, Buffalo does a capital expansion, whatever percentage of, whether it's Montrose and Waverly or just Montrose, whatever it is. I was, and that's what we're going to find out more in these meetings, how we structure this. So if they have a $10 million expansion in Montrose, that's 30% of the overall flow, then it might be $3 million. You know what I mean? Whenever improvement's done there, they're going to charge for that. So to your point, you're right, either way, there's going to be additional costs in the future.
If we have to look, which is on, we will, at our fee for sewer. Do we or would our residents feel more comfortable with it being where you own it or that we're passing on to somebody else?
Yeah, because if we have our own land, I mean, at least they have something that the city invested in and that they own it and it's ours. We should, Buffalo, that's all that it says, just.
Yeah, I think there's more that could go wrong too. I mean, it's just that type of thing, but if we're sending pipe seven miles, right? Seven, well, that would be, yeah. You know, something happens halfway through the little thing and we got to find where it's coming from versus it's in town. You know, it's five miles down the road, it's on the railroad or whatever, but it'll go wrong. I would lean more towards us expanding ours and just, Waverly, are you going to hand this with us?
I don't think it's.
Figure out the rest of it later on or.
It's not expanding our plant, it's redoing our facility. We need to expand the pond system. It's going to be wiped out and switched out and stuff. Now, will they use it or not do it? Maybe. But you're also talking about a very easy plant to run to a somewhat medium to difficult plant to run. I'm just saying, I mean, from the new classes and what I've had. Pond systems are the most common plant in Minnesota, fairly easy to run. Actually, this stuff's a whole different character.
And we're tired of class A lives and all that.
It could, most likely will be. Not seeing, you guys can't, there is companies that run wastewater facilities for towns. Viola, People Services. I mean, you can hire.
Outsource that.
Outsource it and let Waverly, Montrose pay that company to run it. All your public works would still run, your end town, the station, lines, jet sewer, so on and so forth, but. There's no doubt that I would think it would require a little bit more staffing out there. I know Waverly wants to be part of it. I don't know how far, how much they want to be part of it. Are they going to be part of doing rounds, doing testing? I don't know what, I mean, I would love to know what the permit looks like when it's all done. I mean, it's.
Yeah, we're just thinking that's not that common for, is that?
We should have been on it.
Well, so in other commission scenarios, I mean, the wastewater commission holds the permit, but you got to have a specified operator, right?
Sure.
Who's the first name on that?
Right, yeah. And as I shared at a previous Waverly meeting, I mean, one commission, what they do is they have like a five-year period. And if either city wants to run it, then they submit a bid to the commission and says it's going to be X dollars an hour for the staff and it's going to cost the commission this many dollars on an annual basis for city X to run the plant, right? And then they both submit bids. Well, in some cases, only one city has staff that are qualified or able to run the plant. And then it's.
Certainly, I, I think we are a facility for small, I don't.
Yes, correct.
That's correct.
The current plan may have.
Well, the current plan, yeah, yeah, we don't want anybody qualified on that.
The only B operator in Montrose and Waverly is myself. So.
Jared Kirk, you know, Ron, if you do decide that we are going to build our own and not regionalize. We're looking at, when the plan's done, two weeks from now, an idea of what we want to do?
Oh, man. Not ten, but the schedule that we kind of laid out was in order to get ourselves in, in line for funding.
It's recorded.
Like September, October, we need to start working on them so that we can get them submitted by March first, which is the headline.
And the further, further we weigh, the less that we have to say what that plant's going to look like. It's going to be more or less, we got to just get something done, correct?
Yeah. So I think, and I think everybody sitting on the table in the audience, but the two big questions out there are regionalization and commission, right?
And then I believe at the last meeting, you had talked about how the, the buy-in amount is, is it open? Buy-in, okay, so.
Is it eligible?
There, that's part of.
That's the debt line in capital?
Yeah. Yeah, we, either one, that March or later this year.
I also want to throw this out there, Buffalo is not willing to start a commission.
Yeah, this would have to be not.
There will be no commission like Buffalo, Montrose.
I know Buffalo does not want to.
They will have full control.
They, they would meet with us once a year to discuss things.
Right, let us know the numbers and rates for the next year.
Kind of, kind of, they have missions to do. In terms of, we would have to say anything.
Ultimately, it's your guys' decision. We'll do whatever we got to do. I mean, you can't just be stagnant either. I mean, you got to decide one way or another.
With our numbers being as rough as they are, you know, 39 for this or, and this plant's going to be more complex to run.
Either way, you raise your pace.
Right, I get that. But if, and Jared, if you have any experience with other towns, but if one plant that does twice the, can handle twice as much water is at least twice as expensive, then what would two pond plants that are simpler and the permits aren't going to be as insane? What would a pond plant in Waverly and a new pond plant at the same capacity here, but still, like, what is the benefit of making a complicated plant to handle two towns versus two simple plants? If our plant was 10 million, probably these days is 15. So two 15 million dollar plants without the headaches of regionalizing or.
Splitting out of Waverly.
Yeah, and it's not, I'm not even assuming that just to split us up, that's not the priority. But if the, if the real product with this plant is it's more complex and once the, you know, once we're getting a new permit, there's probably new things we're testing for and new things we're treating for. And that may be the same thing with a new pond plant, but if a pond plant is simpler and cheaper, I don't know the numbers, I'm just estimating.
So, so one thing that I want to just bring to first of all, because I appreciate you asking that question because that involves a little bit of confusion.
Moving forward in Minnesota, there will not be any pond plants, period.
So it's not a different option.
Because of the treatment requirements associated with phosphorus, nitrogen's coming, there's other things that are coming. There will be no more pond plants, because nobody will be able to use them as regular ponds.
Well, that's one more thing to chalk up to. Our rates went up because the state doesn't allow us to, you know, it's, it's more.
The state is something that costs our back very normal.
But, that's, I was wondering the whole thing, the costs mount and rise, like.
So, I need to dive into that a little further. There's no question in my mind that the, you know, the plant upgrade and expansion that we're talking about here, I mean, if the two cities were to decide the part ways where to get Montrose, I mean, similarly, they'd be spending similar money to get a permit, which they don't even have apparently, which would be a, it's not nice people, it's just not good.
So why don't we just go to them and say, hey, this is what we're doing. We have to build this plant. Are you on board or just start building one? Because we have to do it, right?
Yeah, and I didn't know that.
So, well, I think if you can't put under the dream, I know what we do that, that maybe you're up with it.
I mean, because if we're on a deadline, you know?
Well, I agree, they're in agreement to build the plant. They're just not able to regionalize.
Okay, but have we asked them, what part do they want to tie in? I mean.
They want to say rates. They don't really know what, what they want to say. They don't really know what it is and they can, as far as, well, we'll be part of operations, but we don't know what that means.
Well, because they're not.
They don't, they don't make it quite.
Qualified, probably so.
Yeah, they, they have all these dreams and ambitions, okay? But it's just not possible. I think that if the consensus here is that we build our own plant, I think the only thing that they are really sticking on is they would just let it commission. I think we could just offer them that and we could all move forward. If that's, if that's the way that you guys want to go and we want to do it, then that's what we do.
I mean, if they feel then that they're part of, you know, any kind of decision, and that's all it's going to take, then that's just too bad. You know, I mean, because really, because they're really not part of it right now, right? They, it's pretty much all Montrose.
Yeah.
Well, not a percent, Montrose.
Right.
We said, right.
So we just send up, we just fill up every month. So if we just give them a little buy-in, you know, they can, well, they are part of the shit.
But it's a little, it's a little time, you can even now just come up like, well, we don't know, but it's not for lack of. I mean, it kind of the way the first meeting went, and I think the first meeting was supposed to be about water treatment, but on what they brought up, you know, the two-to-one ratio was they kept on bringing up wastewater, that's what their focus is on and that's, and, you know, it's kind of a, it's undermined as being a customer of wastewater. But when we did talk both about either commission on water or a commission on wastewater, I think there were questions asked of, you know, what would you want that to look like? And a lot of it was just, well, we can get to the legalities later, but we're just looking for. But, I mean, like, yeah, we were looking for a finance contract that day. It was just, there was still a little feedback as far as what they do want to see. And maybe, maybe we haven't been direct enough with the question, because the Buffalo has been an option still, labor. So hopefully, maybe Buffalo have different news that we want to hear or something, but I doubt it, I mean, their numbers are. They're, they're what they are and they're justifying them somehow. We, we may find out exactly how they came to the calculation on the 21st, but I don't think.
I don't think they came to the calculation, I mean, you're.
Right, I don't think we're going to get it for a number and.
At the end of the day, it's the same upfront cost, on the own, and we have to maintain it and we have to pay for operations, long-term.
But getting the answers to those questions at least gets us to the point where now we're talking to Weverly and we can just ask them their question, what do you want to see in a commission?
And if they want a commission, I don't want to see some sort of, I mean, I was going to say sixty-four we split, I'm not sharing that.
Well, you just go buy your connections. You go buy the.
That's a, that's a, a flow, I mean.
Flow, I mean, but I think it's truly something that the full Weverly and Montrose council needs to sit down and have a work at. Because we're meeting with you guys and we're meeting with Weverly and it's like, we're just, we are just the workers. You guys alone are going to decide. Where to spend the money, you have how much money to spend here. And this is not a small decision.
Well, like you said, there is still going to be stuff from enacted slug fines that are being pulled out, right?
That's all going to have to get set up, yeah, I mean, we have no.
And whether that's to Buffalo or.
Or wherever, I mean, your costs of running this plant are going to go up, I mean, let's be honest. Costs either way are going to go up, whether you're with Buffalo or you build your own plant.
Yeah.
And I, I guess the question is, do you want it to be orders of, of something or do you want it to be customers of Buffalo?
I just think it's funny that, I think Weverly thinks running a plant is easy. That's what I get out of it in those meetings. It's not as easy as they think it is. I mean, ponds are fairly easy, but I've told you, I mean, it's.
That's, that's the feeling I get out of them, like, oh, we should be running, you know, caution around this plant. And then, yeah, they don't even have a guy with a license there to run it, so. But if Weverly wants to run the facility when you build it, let them run it. This is on the videotape, but I mean, just, I've worked here twenty years. I mean, if we didn't have a wastewater facility, I'd be way more happier, let's be honest. It's not that hard to run, you know, lift stations and mains. Wastewater facility and a future water facility will be your biggest operating cost in this town. Along with maintaining your roads. Straight on. Not just running it, but staffing it, everything else, costs. For that upfront cost, you know, we both saw that, everyone was shocked, but it was going to be the same cost. That's all for your guys' concern, like, I've just told you, running a wastewater facility with public work, we'd be half the staff if we didn't have a wastewater facility. I mean, we'd be less, at least two or three less. So. But it needs to be decided.
So you guys think.
Only we said thirty million. I thought that's, you're going to have to raise your rates. Either way, you're, the residents of this town are not going to be happy.
I don't think we're going to come up with anything for Weverly to talk to.
Right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you guys something, kind of where we're at. I have a safety warning event and where you guys know some progress happening. Um, but we leave with Buffalo and Weverly on Monday, so we'll be, so we'll be in Kansas and that way it helps to see this.
Can we? We do have a workshop then with us and like the Monday afternoon then and talk about everything? Would that be possible? Maybe.
Yeah, I don't know, we, we, you know, just discussed.
It might possibly have been done also.
Yeah.
We'll just replay the tape or your thoughts.
So what we would have at that point would be the answers from Buffalo, two of the questions we have, where Weverly wants, and then what you all would like to know from Weverly, which is what, what's their threshold? What does, what do they want out of commission?
I don't know, Weverly said one, maybe between, maybe a couple.
But, but maybe that's an easy enough question to just get out of them before you tell them we're, we have a workshop coming up. What, what do you want?
Yeah, what do I have to mean?
Would it hurt for them to come to our workshop? So if we can.
You'd buy all of them.
Yeah. I mean, maybe that's what's going to.
I don't think you can't wait all of them.
No, just their two people, I mean, just their people that are working on it. That's a lot. I mean, how many people do they have working on it?
It's like all their.
So it's like they're two people.
You just have to ask.
So, just straight up, Weverly, correct me if I'm wrong, Weverly does not want to run Buffalo.
That's the impression we get.
Straight up.
We're getting more pushback from that.
They're willing to meet with Buffalo, but I don't know, I know something.
There's definitely a bit of customer piece, that's a.
That's.
They want to be a customer of Montrose, they want to be a customer of Buffalo, that's super clear.
But there's not, I mean, that's not going to change. I mean.
Unless Buffalo will generalize with Buffalo and their commission, right?
Right, but.
That would probably have to be a stipulation of a commission, though, is you need to provide at least one person who can operate the facility.
Right.
Participate in rounds.
I should have made a copy of the contract that Weverly put in, hold and updated.
Obviously, we have a new contract going forward.
Right, but in our directory news, if it's not visited, we're supposed to have a meeting for sure once a year, not twice a year with both councils on that wastewater facility. And I don't think it's happened in ten to fifteen.
Because you say not one or.
So. And I don't disagree, Weverly probably want any more say, but how can you have say in something you've never done? Just, they haven't done it in twenty years, twenty-two years.
Right, and that's where they would have to be educated on it and, you know, licensing.
Right.
Sure. Having a, in the time of each game right now, when the client is known, they're going to have to have some guy licensed, I would say.
They've got to jump really fast, because I think all the licenses and licenses, but they could hire somebody too if they come out. You know, there's always, back to your, staffing is not the issue.
Oh, right.
Not, but we're going to be hiring somebody licensing.
You better raise your rates.
I mean, and even if they did that, they, why couldn't they just be our customer because we've already hired somebody to do that?
Well, I, right?
So.
But like, honestly, I, what I get from Kirby, I think you're leaning into building a facility here. Let me consider, see our opinions you want, it's your business. You build a plant, we'll run it, we'll figure out what. It's what we do, we're your employees. But I think we got to move forward.
Well, I can wonder if you're the other.
And I think, I think the direction would be to move forward is for these councils to meet with each other.
Right.
I, I'm fine with.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, I say we just extend invite to, invite their entire council members to this app to our workshop, and if they show up, they show up, if not, I mean, I guess they're not in favor of the decision.
I'll see if they have, I see that they have a meeting, stuff like that.
They do it Tuesday.
Actually, it was twenty-eight, I have the, uh, Weverly's little township.
Baltimore, I think.
Yeah. So can we do a five?
Maybe we need a five.
So can we do a five?
We can do a live. I'll see if that's possible, you know? Or maybe we just trust and then we call.
We need to see regardless and we extended them again, but we'll at least have more information and.
We don't want to call, we're just trying and maybe just.
Josh, oh, yeah, Josh.
Um, I mean, the same question for you, Jared, though, but let's say we do build a facility. Is the land we have up there appropriate enough? I mean, is it, we have no land up there to build this facility?
Yeah, we're not anticipating land after this year.
I'm just curious, because you can't build in the north. You have solar panels everywhere. Can't build to the east because you have the weather.
I can go to the west, because there's probably.
So south is the only way you can go, there ain't much land there. I'm just curious, I mean, if they're going to.
How many, well, we're working there and, um, we're getting this.
All right, uh, workshop there.